This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Excuse me. I'd like to call the May 9, 2019 meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30 PM. Before beginning tonight's meeting, I would like to recognize the heartbreaking loss of our student, Erin Perfetta, who passed away this week after a courageous battle. Erin was a sophomore at North Haven High School, so of course our thoughts and prayers are with Erin's family and friends during this time. I'd just like a moment of silence from the board, please, in her honor. Thank you. Our first item is our consent agenda, which is our April 2014 meeting minutes. Secondly is, and I'm laughing, if you all can see how little this is that I'm reading, I think it's a font of an eight. How long?
Sustainability.
And retirements of the following teachers: Lorna Mangels, grade three teacher at Clintonville Elementary School, who I will say was my son David's teacher; Mary Menendez, grade three teacher at Green Acres; Janice Reagan, or Reagan, grade three teacher at Green Acres; Claire Lester, grade eight teacher at North Haven Middle School. In addition, we have the resignations of Kim Cantrell, our transitional teacher at Montauk Wees; Raymond Deacon, our English teacher and head girls' basketball coach at the high school; and Todd Petroni, science teacher at the North Haven Medical School. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. I'd like to wish all of the retirees and those who resigned. I know both Ray and Todd are moving elsewhere, so I wish them well. I'm not sure about Kimberly. So I do wish them well. All in favor?
Well, can I just add a couple?
Sure, of course.
Because I taught with Claire. Eighth grade science is a tough, a tough subject. And she was so good with all level of students. Lorna, I always remember, she was a special ed teacher thirty years ago when Stevenson, the reading program, became... So anytime I see a Pan American Yummy Sandwich, I always think of Lorna. She used the Stevenson little cues all the way through our teaching. I never taught with Mary or Janice, but they have good reputations. So grade three is getting a big hit this year. And I wish them... Oh, I always say this: Welcome to the other side.
Thank you, Dot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, can we wish them well? Board of Ed student reps, Zoe, would you like to go first?
Sure. Yeah, so just like a week or two ago, we just got back, the music department just got back on our band trip. Woo-hoo! Got a lot done. We got eight superior ratings, seven first place, best overall band and orchestra, and the Outstanding Booklist Awards, Gillian Reagan. And you're excited for next year, for Toronto. Yeah, exciting. Our eighth exams have just started for everyone. Our inductions are still happening, going on. We had DAFL Society yesterday, Language Society, Triumph tomorrow. My class of 2020 fundraiser has a car wash next Saturday. Anybody want their car Scooby Clean? Come by McDonald's, from eight to three, anytime. Junior awards coming up next week, senior awards after that. And everyone's just getting ready for summer and finals, and yeah.
Great. I know it's hard to believe, one more month of school.
Yeah.
Hard to believe, one more month of high school, huh, Tim?
Yeah, it's hard to believe. Yeah, so through the senior assembly today, Dr. Dowling spoke to us about the end-of-year activities for us. And prom is next Friday, day seventeen, we talked about that. Prom is still being sold, starting tomorrow though. And the senior class picnic is in three weeks, end of May. May 31st, we're going to Holiday Hill. And graduation is next month, June 13th.
Unless we have another snow day.
Unless you have another snow day. Hopefully not. After that, we have Project Graduation again at the only given town, so.
Thank you. You'll both be here at the July 13th meeting, though, right? Day before graduation. Tim, this is where you want to be. Right, the day before graduation.
July?
June 12th.
June 12th.
Yeah, June 12th. Our meeting June 12th, sorry. Thank you for telling me that. All days go into one. Thank you. For my report, a couple things. I wanted to congratulate the art students for Art B. I don't know if this is stuff you were bringing up, but I'll go on. I was not able to attend, but I saw some great, great pictures and artwork from people who did attend. So once again, our music and our art department just never fail to amaze me with what they do with our students. I wanted to thank them for that. And then just move on to our next, which is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business today?
The only thing I think we should congratulate, our Spelling Bee team, because they took us to the finals.
That they did. So thank you, Spelling Beeers.
And Amanda and Jennifer, it's your job for life now.
I was worried about that as soon as you mentioned that. It's a non-tenured position, unless Tim's coming back. We're gonna be like the cast of Friends, Tim. We're gonna only negotiate together, you and Amanda. And you know, you can come back for the Spelling Bee. You don't have to be in the school. You can just be a president of North Haven. We've never been this far along. So we've been proud. And again, too, Dot, you're absolutely right. And I do want to thank the North Haven Education Foundation, because that is the first of amazing night, oh, this is amazing night. And Joe, you're a member, right?
Sure.
And what the North Haven Education Board Foundation does for us and for our teachers and our students, we would not be able to do some of the things that they do just based on budgets and cuts. So I want to thank them for that and look forward to next year. Next year should be costumes. Any new business that we wanted to talk about? Okay, so let's go to our ACES report of standing committee. First one is ACES.
Yes, we had our meeting today, and it was a very nice... I don't know, have you seen this, Patrick?
I haven't.
Well, I'll send it down to you afterwards. And there's really some good news. You know, they had started a special ed transportation initiative, and that's gone well, and it saved districts some money. And now they're really starting to give calls from all over. It's far north, it's Holland, Manchester. So, and they're investing in some new wheelchair vans. So that looks very promising. The other thing that's also good for us is the Health Collaborative. East Haven Board of Ed has joined. So that's good for us, because that should lower our part of what we think. And let's see, I think there's some... They have an ACES home outreach program for students with some serious health and behavioral challenges. And they're being funded through the family's insurance. And they're dealing with a lot of billing directly. So it's cutting out costs for the districts, because they don't have to have two or three people submitting the insurance. So I would be glad to send this down to you. Yeah, well, I finished reading.
Thank you, Dot. Curriculum instruction planning, Dr. O'Brien?
I was not there, so I am going to allow someone who was.
I'll just give you a quick update on that. Tracy Gambardella joined us to talk about the Teachers College Phonics Program, which we're gonna bring in next year. We had piloted it in some classrooms this past year, and it was very successful. So she brought a couple of kits to show, and we discussed that. We also talked about some of the new high school graduation requirements. Sandra and Russ joined us for that discussion. And the mastery-based diploma assessment, which will be a part of that. Throughout next year, we'll keep updating CNI and the board on these shifts and these changes. So we're following it legislatively and then beginning to make some changes in terms of planning for kids when they take room. And then we had a real adventure, because we went out to Project Adventure to observe that in action, and it was really great. The kids were wonderful, the teacher was amazing, it was just, it was great. So Dr. Della had really wanted the CNI group to see it in action and just realize what kids were doing and the responsibility of the student leaders in that, and it was excellent. And we will not have a June 3rd CNI meeting.
Is that it? Thank you. Finance and Operations?
Finance and Operations met earlier this evening. Good news is Pam has been here with us for two months now, and she has lifted the spending freeze, and she's getting more comfortable with the current budget. Things are in flux, things are moving. She did find a savings with an energy discrepancy, where they were charging a sales tax. So we've had some savings, we've had some other things pop out, but so far, so good, everything's balancing itself out. We are on track for where we should be at this time of the year, as we're still waiting for the state reimbursement, which will be coming next month.
Yep, exactly. But we don't know what that is yet, right?
We don't know what the final figure is yet.
We don't know.
And then also, insurance status, we are trending very nicely. Hopefully, they took Amanda's advice last year and stay healthy. Well, you won it, you know, a health program, like Silver Sneakers.
Oh, yeah.
So insurance is trending nicely, so that's what we've talked about.
Now, on top of that, with just go for Finance and Operations, I just want to remind everyone to vote on Monday, the 23rd.
I think so. Is this coming Tuesday, the meeting?
Tuesday, of course.
So Tuesday is the town meeting, and then the following week will be the referendum.
I thought Monday was the budget hearing?
Yeah. I just want to remind you, Tuesday, and then the 21st, on the 23rd. Perfect. Thank you. Middle School Building Committee?
I haven't made since the last DOE meeting. I think our next meeting is scheduled for May.
Okay. They started on the floor yet, do they not? Or they're waiting till June?
They wait till the end of the school year, yeah.
North Haven Education Foundation, Joe?
Yep. So I was, unfortunately, I was traveling, and I didn't get to attend the Spelling Bee. But everything that I heard about it was that it was very well-run, and everybody had a good time. And obviously, they mentioned how well the Board of Ed team did. I don't have the numbers yet that have come in, but I can find out and I'll report back exactly how well it went. Other than that, there have been some grants that have come in that are being looked at and talked about. Should know more by next meeting, as to what the grant committee is gonna do and what the board will do on the grants that'll come in.
Great, thank you, Joe. It was a good night. Probably, I think it's probably one of the best that I've been to chair, which is...
It was fun.
It was a lot of fun. Policy. I'd like to speak on that one. I apologize for missing that meeting today.
For policy, committee met earlier tonight. We used it as a planning meeting. We began looking at the new model shipment goodman policies. We're going to start with the 5,000 series, which is the student policies. And the committee is going to take home some of the new policies to review and compare to our current policies. And we'll meet next month to really jump into that.
Are we going to, are we going to make it before our board meetings? Or we're gonna try and do it before the board meetings?
So I think we're gonna try and do it before next month. It's board meetings, however, over the summer with the half-hour change.
Yeah.
We'll leave that to be determined. We may even do it after.
Okay, so will we do the next one on June whatever date, June 12th, our next board?
Yeah, we'll do it.
And then we typically do not have a July meeting. So would we then wait till August?
We'll meet August, yep.
Okay. But meanwhile, we can still be reviewing some of these things. PTA Council, Amanda?
Yeah, so the PTA Council met, and they were very excited, because at our next meeting, which will be May 28th, the Boys and Girls Club of Wallingford will be coming to talk to us. And everybody is very excited to hear more about that. Folks are excited about those developments. We're starting to plan our fundraiser for next year, which might be a basketball game, but it might also be something completely different. So you're welcome for that information. More to come on that soon. Many of our elementary schools are prepping their stepping-up ceremonies for their fifth graders, so everybody's really excited about that. And also, the PTA Council was trying to get a lot of folks to go to yesterday's playground dedication for Ridge Road, which I wasn't able to make it, but it looked like it was a really great event.
Goldie went.
Yeah, he was.
Good.
Yeah, he thought it was really nice.
He was awesome, held on.
Went well, too.
I saw the pictures on social media. It was fun. The middle school had a baby presentation that was very well-received. And they celebrated Pi Day and had a fundraiser that raised a few thousand dollars for the family of a sick child. The World Language Department hosted a potluck dinner that was a huge success as well. May 22nd is going to be the new student orientation at the middle school. And May 24th, a Holocaust survivor will be coming to visit with the eighth-grade students. One other piece of feedback that I was asked to deliver, which I also agree with, was the presentation by Eric Jackson has been talked about widely, and people really received it very well and absolutely loved hearing from him, so.
Good.
And Zoe, I think you could speak for the same, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Amanda. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the standing committee reports?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next is staff communication. Mr. Stur, would you like to give your approval?
Good evening, everyone. So the last day of school is set for June 14th. And if the board is in agreement, I would like to dismiss all the schools early on the last three days, which would be that Wednesday, the Thursday, which is graduation, and that last day of school on Friday. And just a reminder that the June's Board of Ed meeting has been changed from Thursday, June 13th, which is our high school graduation. It will now be that Wednesday on June 12th, same time at 6:30, I believe, right, Anita? Okay.
Do we have to take a vote on having school dismissed early on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, okay. So we're all in agreement at that? Okay.
So tomorrow, we have a big day. We are beginning our interview process for the North Haven High School Assistant Principal position. We've had an enormous amount of candidates. So in order to do that justice, we are having a day of screening interviews tomorrow. And that will be our first step in a multi-step process to find a really great candidate.
I think it's important to say that we had over 150.
Yeah, I think last look was 187.
187 candidates, people who want to come for one position, that want to come to North Haven. Says a lot about our school district and its reputation.
And lastly, we have the board, the board meeting dates for 2019, 2020. They were in your packets. There was just two mistakes in there. The September 1st date that's in there is really September 12th. And the December, I think it said second in there, is really December 12th. So there's two changes in dates there. But we do need to take a vote on whether we approve those.
Okay, so September is September 12th, and December is December 12th. Okay. Anything else you have before we go into that?
That's all I have today.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Board of Education meeting dates?
So moved.
Second?
I'd just like to say for discussion, with the correction as Mr. Stur just gave us, September 12th, December 12th, we will get a new list with the dates sent out to us, and they will be posted correctly on the website.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Our next item is Melinda, Assistant Superintendent Report.
We continue to monitor our K numbers and our ID interests. Next week, we will meet to determine slots for the ID program. Right now, each building is pretty close, between 52 and 55 students across the four buildings. So we're gonna have a planning meeting next week, and I'll update you in June as to where we are with all of that. And yesterday, I was fortunate to attend a Teachers College end-of-year workshop in the city with Tracy Gambardella. And it was really timely, because many of the breakout sessions correlated really nicely with the race and diversity work that we're doing in the district. And Teachers College is working very hard to embed more multicultural texts, authors, and illustrators into the units of study. So it was really helpful, and those are some books that we'll be able to embed in our units across all of the grade levels. And additionally, we were really very fortunate, because we've been selected to host some New England seminars in July with Teachers College, where other districts will pay for teachers to attend, but we'll be able to send eight, because they're using our site. So there will be a module for grades three through eight around debate and essay, reading and writing, and phonics K2, which is timely with the work that we're bringing in in the primary grades.
Thank you. That's good news. When you said go back to the 51, 55, that was for ID students?
No, that is regular numbers. For instance, Montauk Wees, now this was as of the seventh, 55. Ridge Road's...
Are you talking about kindergarten?
Kindergarten, yes.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Okay, so...
Montauk Wees is 55, Ridge was 52, Clintonville 52, Green Acres 54. And then we're carrying the ID numbers, too, to get a sense of what that looks like. It looked like two more interested from Montauk Wees. Ridge had 27 interested in ID, Clintonville four, and Green Acres about 18. But these move by the day.
I know they do.
So that's just a rough piece. So we'll sit down and try to do the best we can to get everyone.
Thank you, Melinda. Pam, Director of Finance and Operations?
Sure. As was mentioned, we're currently monitoring the current 18, 19 budget very closely. Year-end analysis is always challenging. And as we get closer to the end, we're digging more into each and every line item. And we're also monitoring purchase orders, closing those that sometimes we set up, and there's a few dollars remaining. So we want to make certain that we have a true picture of what our year-end balance will be. In addition, we do have a new accounting supervisor, who started with us last week. She does have background in education finance, doing payroll and accounts payable. So she's hit the ground running, and it's been helpful. And I'm really pleased that the business office overall has been working very collaboratively. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I did comment before, it's a little bit slow-going, but we're getting there. And as long as we're going forward, I think it's all good. And just to comment on what Dot had noted about the Health Insurance Collaborative, absolutely correct that East Haven joined. It should, in fact, lower our costs as the collaborative in general. But we also were able to reduce our administrative fee by $5 per member per month, which would equate to about a $24,000 savings as we go into '19, '20. So there is some really good news about becoming part of that collaborative. And the last thing was the transfer of funds process. It was something that we discussed both at the Finance Committee meeting last month and memorialized it. And it was in your packets for your information. Again, I think it's something that, as you indicated, we can comfortably work within, and the board will know exactly what to expect when we do transfers.
Okay, good. One thing that perhaps maybe you can do sometime over the summer or whatever, is just for, especially for the Finance Committee, give us a list of the items that have to go out to bid or ready to go out to bid this year. Like, you know, contracts that are three, four years, and they were five-year contracts, just so we have an idea of what's out there.
I will tell you that collaboratively with the town yesterday, we did open the health insurance, I mean, health insurance, I have that on my mind, you know. The cleaning service did.
You did, okay.
Yes, and it was very favorable. So there should be some savings there. In addition, we just posted for the yearbook photographer, and I got a little confused, because they also need the yearbook publisher for the high school. So we are working on that RFP as well. So I think May 29th is when we're opening the photographer. It is on our website. And the publisher, I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, we don't need to have, like, just to say, these are up for, the copiers are up for bid.
Perfect.
And that's so, just so that we know that, in case we are asked in any kind of...
Sounds good.
Yeah, so thank you for that. Did you have something, Dot?
No, I was gonna say, especially the big items, like the bus and the cafeteria, those are always like to know where we are in our contract.
Absolutely. Okay, great.
Do you mind if I jump in really quick? I just think that Pam is really underselling herself in the past eight weeks she's been here. She's moved mountains, really, since she's gotten here. And she's been tagging along with me as well, at the staff coffees and all these different places we've been going to. So not only is she taking care of the budget, but she's creating a lot of relationships within the community as well. So I really think she's doing quite a fabulous job.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. And we appreciate that. I've heard things have been running very smooth in our relationship with the town, so I appreciate that. It's been great, actually. I'm very grateful.
I've got to beat again, Wes, I mean, for meetings.
I know it.
Public comment? Yes. I thought I saw you behind the red.
Hi, good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Monica Hutton.
Come up a little more, Monica, thank you.
My name is Monica Hutton. I'm a parent of an eighth grader with autism and of a seven-year-old, goes to Clintonville. So he was just lately diagnosed with TEGS, OCD, and anxiety. So I'm a very involved parent on special education. Advocate, I help a lot, NAMI, here in Connecticut, since I moved from Virginia last year. Now, I'm actually applying membership for the SAC, the State Advocacy Committee, Council on Special Education. So I'm very involved in these things, and I wanted to mention it to you. And I'm glad that we started a partnership with Ms. Dowling. Since I moved in last year, I've been mentioning to Ms. Dada Curry that it would be very important for our town to have a parent resource center or a CIC, what we had in other states, a Special Education Advisory Committee. We haven't got there yet for locally, you know, involvement. So as I've seen, you know, need from parents in our Facebook groups and here in the town, we were thankfully, with Ms. Dowling, something apart, trying to get something in town. But my friends who are Ridge Road, I want this, too. You know, I want a collaboration in my other school. So I just finally started and finishing today, kind of, wanted to let you know. We are setting up a group on Facebook, so to gather special needs families here in North Haven, mostly. I have a lot of contacts with Ark of Connecticut, with the Connecticut Council on Developmental Disabilities. We have actually one member, the chair, who lives here in Connecticut, in North Haven. So that's what I wanted to bring. I want to bring those trainings, those contacts that I have, to train our families. I've seen a lot of the lack of knowledge from our special ed parents. Because I'm more in power now, after, through the years, I know where to find the resources. But that's not the case for a lot of new parents, new special needs parents. We feel isolated, mostly when parents are in ACES or outplacements. And that's where the concern comes. Where is the inclusion of our kids within the school system? So that's why we made it as a special needs, not just special ed. Because there is still a lot of homeschoolers out there that we want to include. We want to have an inclusion, a partnership with PTS, with our community. You know, bring the knowledge that I have from other entities that I'm working with, as Autism Speaks, Advocacy, they're already training our first responders in other towns here in Connecticut. So we want to bring that, how to train our first responders, not only for mental cognitive disabilities, but as well with autism and all that cognitive disabilities. So that's why we think it's more important as a, you know, town involvement, not just special education or, you know, the school board. It's the whole town, because we are transitioning later to what is out there for them when they are in the adulthood. So anyway, that's, you know, where I'm at, I wanted to share with you. The group just started, you know, like I said, I finished, we've been sick over and at home. So it's gonna call, the name is Special Needs Advisory Group, SNAG, North Haven SNAG. You're welcome to be part of it. Homeschoolers, high schoolers, you're welcome, everybody is, something. I'm a self advocate myself on mental health and behavioral health. I'm a self advocate myself on mental health and behavioral health. I have my own issues, ADHD, starting with depression. We move a lot within the state, within the country. My husband works with the federal government. So that's why it's hard, you know, when you already moved a lot and when you are a special needs parent, trying to restart over. You know, that's where I want to bring this knowledge and empower other parents. Don't feel alone. You can do this and we can collaborate with our, you know, teachers and everyone else around. It's difficult, you know, it's hard, but we can get there. That's what I want to bring over.
Monica, that's a wonderful, wonderful idea. And thank you for letting us know what you're doing. I thought I saw something on the community page a couple of weeks ago. Did you post something?
I started on and been posting on it off. Whatever I share from, you know, Autism Speaks or NAMI, I'm actually missing advisory right now, canceled from call. That was part one things that I did. I don't know if you know about this bill seventy-one ten. That's one that takes a lot to me at heart. Soon as I moved last year, that's the one that it says, kind of, since last year, we're gonna remove a behavioral kid, a kid with problems. That's the main idea. So that bill got postponed, Superintendent knows. I've actually been working with CPAC, Helping John Flanders, on ideas on improving with NAMI. I advocate that day and I mentioned and everybody involved, so how is important having the involvement? And I mentioned that day, there was as well a bill, surprise now, about the levels in the schools, that they have found, of course, you know, that change behavioral within our kids and how important it is to test it. So that was part of what I brought that day and said, you know, you're complaining about the kids' behaviors, but you need to look, what is the source of those behaviors? We cannot just push them out. We need to, you're gonna cause more issues, trauma, positive stress, you know. So that's why we want to get there. You know, anxiety, as I suffer myself, my child, it's concerning, you know. So I don't want all the families to feel like they are alone. And then we can do something, you know.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Anyone want to tell Patrick what a great job he's doing, principals? Yeah, publicly. We have such a small audience today. I appreciate that.
Well, this teacher appreciation week, so we shall try to thank all of our teachers, the job that they're doing.
Very good, thank you.
Outstanding.
Any other future agenda items? Okay, then may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters pertaining to personnel?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Be whatever the hell they are.
Just day by day.
Are you guys ready? Are you, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, meeting's adjourned.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.